We're good after ten, so we're gonna open up our regular session at this time for April 19th, 2017, and before we start, if you want to please either silence or turn off your cell phones. And then join us, please, for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, welcome everyone. Okay, our first item of business is public comment. And we have a lot of new folks joining us today, so I'm assuming there's some public comment. And if you please just come on up and say your name for the record and have a seat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ben Ritter, and I'm hired by Lake Railway. I'm a contractor, I live in Oregon City, Oregon, and I've been hired to oversee the road transportation. I'm in charge of regulatory compliance, safety, training, and I've been here since November. And since the first of November, we've delivered over 650 cars to interchange. As everybody knows here, that we went through one of the most severe harsh winters that we've experienced in quite some time. We only had one service interruption at that time, and that was in December right before Christmas holiday. But since then, we have missed a week of delivery to the Union Pacific Railroad. So our service and our performance has been doing well, as we have been delivering the railcars to the Union Pacific Railroad. My first question would be, why has the county commissioners decided to discontinue Lake Railway's operation with the county of Lake County?
Well, first, before I say anything, Denise, can you turn on our mix?
Oh.
Thank you. And our legal counsel's here. From my point of view, we're not able to sit here today and tell you that that's a contractual thing, but I'm gonna just go to the legal counsel on that.
Well, I don't know that I can get into the reasons of it, since that's not that comes from the board, but the contract allows for us to terminate it under certain circumstances, and the board chose to do that.
Well, we understand that, Mr. Bailey, we do have our employees here today, but you know, it has an adverse condition, our employees, their families, athletes, the customers, who are certified on this. And basically, this is an open meeting, and we'd like to know why, the reason why for the termination.
That's not why you're here, is that what it's about?
We have provided service since November, since I've been here, delivered over 650 cars. And I think in all fairness for the company, we would like to know the reason why.
I'm gonna make another little quick statement, I'll try and choose my words right.
Okay.
In the world we live in, the legalities, I wanna be careful what I say. But I think this board was very mindful of the impacts, potential impacts, short term or long term, of everybody involved, from the shippers, the current and existing shippers in those businesses, the rail line itself, and future businesses. So I guess what I would say is, this board of commissioners has a plan, and with the true hope that everyone's whole when all is said and done. Okay, thank you.
It's very nice to meet you, you've been here since September. We have a contractual agreement with Lake Railway. Are you actually representing Lake Railway today? Paul and Rob are neither here, do you have the authority to ask these questions? And are you the one that's able to negotiate anything for Lake Railway?
I'm not in the position to negotiate, but Rob and Paul was not able to make it today, so they asked if I would represent the railway.
Is Rob in town?
Not anymore, no, he was called back.
Okay, I know O.D.Rail, I met with O.D.Rail earlier this morning, Rob. Rob has now made contact with us, I appreciate that you're here today. Rob has missed a very good opportunity to come talk to us today, today our legal counsel's here. Appreciate you being here, I would really like for you to come here before today, maybe when you first came on and started building that relationship with the board of commissioners. Appreciate you sitting here today saying everything you've done. Would you be sat here from the start and didn't partner with us, we've been very good, I would appreciate that.
One thing that I was asked to do, Mr. Ritter, when I came on board, was, we knew we had some regulatory compliance issues, and I made a special trip to Salem, and I met with Jim Winters, Alan Kelly, Greg Stank, those supervisors and so forth. And I kinda laid out a strategic plan on what I saw with future railroad, training, compliance, and so forth. So that's my role. I've had 42 years of experience in the railroad industry, working for the Union Pacific Railroad. I've spent the last 10 years in the Reno Springs and that area, so I've got a wide range of experience on railroad operations, from transportation to track maintenance and so forth. Part of my responsibility is also is to provide track inspection of the track itself. As you know, the county is responsible for bridge maintenance, and there's a lot of bridges out there that need to repair. According to the lease agreement, it's the county's responsibility to provide funding for that. And my question would be...
That's actually incorrect.
Is that incorrect?
That is incorrect.
Okay, I have the lease agreement here, Mr. Bailey.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ritter. I think unfortunately, you've been put in an odd position this morning, because you haven't been part of any negotiation. You weren't part of the mediation that we dealt last month. And I don't know if you're aware that I spoke with Lake Railway's attorney yesterday.
I was not aware, no, sir.
I think for that position.
But according to the agreement, I think it's Page 4, Section...
I'm not an attorney, but I would like, once again, are you here and do you have authority to talk about and negotiate anything? But at least, we have been before mediator, we have been working with legal counsel for Paul and Rob today.
Yes, I've been asked to ask these specific questions. I'm not in a position to negotiate, but Section 5.08 on Page 4 does indicate that the county, not the L.R.Y., shall be responsible for the costs and compliance with the F.R.A. Bridge Safety Standards. Part of our responsibility as a company is to inspecting bridges on a weekly basis, and we've been doing so. You know, we've got plans for this summer to do some track rehabilitation and so forth. You, as well as I know, that the bridge maintenance is gonna be a vital source to keep the railroad open.
And I would like to ask you, with all your years of different experience, and the definition of a bridge, and the CFR definition of a bridge, and Pot Lake Railway's responsibility of the bed, the approach to the rail, and the ties that go over the bridge, what's your responsibility? And are they ready to fulfill their obligation on that? We know our obligation, we've had a full evaluation done, but we're applying to the board, and getting those shoulders, and we're gonna address our part. Are you ready to address that part that you're responsible for?
We have another contractor by the name of Dave Hutton that's in charge of the track. Dave and I work closely, supervising the men that work here. And there are plans being made to start replacing bridge timbers. Grant money's been approved to get railroad ties and so forth. My main concern is to rehabilitate the track between here and state line, approximately 15 miles.
So, and I'm trying to be cautious, but I don't know what I'd be able to say, but I set very much straight across from your boss and tried to negotiate an agreement so that we can get those bridges taken care of. And it didn't go well.
Okay.
You may be in a position that, as our legal counsel says, that you're not in the best position right now, that you're not knowledgeable of everything that we've been working on, Mr. Ritter. And so I appreciate it very much, but our dedication to this rail line, and everything, it might not be what your perception is, and how hard we're working on to make sure that this stays a viable operation for our community, because that rail line is that important to us and our community. And we have lived and worked very hard to make sure that this is gonna be a viable operation.
Well, this sites the fact that all of the employees that you have here today, we care deeply about, their jobs and the future and the opportunities. We have Dee Brown from the Collins Company, Cornerstone as well. Those jobs and the impacts on those businesses and their operation, it's all, I mean, it's kind of a backbone of the southern end of the county, as far as how we move forward. So we're totally aware of it and working hard and diligently towards a solution that works for everyone that's in this room and all those that are at those plants. But I'm gonna make one quick comment, because of the legal nature of different things, Mr. Ritter, I really appreciate, and you're well spoken and no doubt very knowledgeable. But given the condition of these discussions in the past, for them to merely tell you, you can come and represent us today, it doesn't work for us. There's been constant communication between our legal counsel and their legal counsel, and if they were going to do that, they should have had the understanding, the decency, and the courtesy to have contacted our legal counsel to say, "Mr. Ben Ritter's gonna come today and speak on our behalf, and we are going to send you that in writing." Because otherwise, we're sitting here, you know, it's one of those, he said, she said, they said, I thinks.
I understand, sir. Let me clarify one thing, I wasn't told to be here, I was asked if I would. So I told him that I would be more than glad to come in and represent the railroad, so that's what, you know, I wasn't told or directed. But you know, I'm from a small town in Kansas, and I enjoy small town atmospheres. And one thing I told L.R.Y. when I joined, I said, "I want to see this railroad survive." I enjoy working here in Lake County, I enjoy working with the employees, the community, the county and so forth. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, if we still have time, there's some other employees that would like to...
Oh, sure, yeah, it's public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any of you that wanna come up and chat?
Well, can we just stand?
Can we stand here, or do you wanna step front?
Because we have the same concerns.
Okay.
Yeah.
As you know, we were both on the original Railroad Advisory Committee.
And I'm the answer, it's a very...
I was the representative appointed by the town to represent their interest in the railroad, which is vital.
And I was appointed because of the private business owner that is adjacent to the railroad, that realizes the importance of the railroad.
The problem is, is we have not been included in any of the meetings for at least the last two years, even though we've asked. So I am feeling that these decisions, these issues that you hide behind the legal record, you know, repercussions of now, have all been decided somehow in some covert way, and now it's all decided, and you've just marched ahead. We're left with the feeling that, what happened? We had, I've been, we've been on there long enough to see really poor railroad management, and really good.
And really good management.
And what happened, you're saying that you haven't had contact with Lake Rail representatives, which I think you told to get out of your office and haven't taken calls from. That's one of the understandings, and maybe it's a misunderstanding.
When you specifically said that he hadn't been face to face with you, and we understand that you banned him from your office, and if the rule of the commissioners' once litigation, illegal problems exists, that you no longer speak to them on a face to face basis. But yet you're bringing that up, that the owners of the railroad didn't come to you face to face. So that's a little bit, you know, questionable.
We all have an open door policy. Paul Dellius, Rob Dellius is welcome in any one of our committee meetings, any one of us individually. They have our cell numbers, they can get ahold of us. Sharon, I asked you to come talk to me when you had a concern.
Yeah, we've had that.
And I could have explained quite a few things to you. We are not hiding anything, other than whenever we've got to a point that we have to do things.
I think getting to that fault is what we're upset about.
We've had multiple meetings over the time, we've had the shippers in, we've had different, there's been public meetings and other.
When were we replaced?
We have not brought in the railroad advisory on this last part, because it was bigger than the railroad advisory. This was potentially some other things that we needed to address.
If there were problems brewing a year ago, wouldn't the advisory committee be involved so that they could get input in and work with the community and make sure that that railroad is...
Both of you are stand-up citizens of Lake County, have you been to either one of the shippers and asked them?
We have had some private conversations.
I'm not gonna speak for Dee Brown, but there's over $60,000 worth of ships on the ground, out there on the ground. People went home, they haven't got paid, there hasn't been cars delivered to them. Our citizens, our industries are struggling at different times, just to let you know. And I'm sure their doors are open if you'd like to ask, what kind of service has been happening?
What I was told yesterday is that Collins Fine and Cornerstone both have sent a letter of support in terms of having Lake Railway operate. And what I would like to do at this point is just to make sure you see, would all of the workers at the railroad, just stand up so we can see and count who you are. Okay, great, I hope that you'll have an opportunity to speak to, but we've got seven individuals here, and we know, we know the importance of the railroad, and this is just one basic part of it, these seven employees. And I understand you're having legal issues, but I don't know why you can't share with us what the plan is to proceed from this point. That wouldn't have anything to do with litigation between Lake Railway. We don't know what the plan is, and we're scared, because we understand that railroad is Lake County.
And I appreciate everyone, the employees, and we want you guys to have a job. We want this railroad to operate the best it can.
So what's the plan?
And I would love to have Cornerstone and Collins and all the associated bloggers and everything in here and stand up and see how many other jobs associated with it.
So what is the plan to keep those people...
The plan is to have the best operating railroad we can.
And Quinn, how, you gave them 22 days to get off the premises, and you already made arrangements?
That's not correct.
Well, I saw the letter saying they needed to terminate on April 30th, and it was dated April 12th.
That's correct, that's the letter that I wrote. The letter exercises the lease option to inform them of termination on that date. The railroad continues to operate past that, they are required to do that.
The railroad, the Lake County Railway is gonna continue to operate after they've been terminated?
Yes, they must.
Their service transportation for...
Really? I don't think, I've never been fired yet from a job, it may happen soon.
You kind of lose interest after...
Usually when you're terminated, you go home, you're done. Yeah, see, you guys, you guys know that. So it seems kinda weird that they're not holding to their end of the bargain with the contract, but you're terminating the contract, but you expect them to keep working.
I have a couple other issues at hand that I wanna discuss, that are specifically with county finances. I understand that Lake Railway was granted a $500,000 grant in order to buy additional ties and things associated with maintenance on the railroad. If Lake Railway is terminated, that grant goes with them, from what I understand, and that won't be available to us anymore. In addition to that...
That's not correct.
I'm just saying what I understand, so you can correct that. In addition to that, they have 3,000 ties on the ground that are ready to be installed, and these fellows know a lot more about it than I do. But with that termination, I would assume those rails, those rails go with them also. So there is some big repercussions for the county financially. I can't believe that you weren't able to solve something without a litigation coming up, because that's just gonna cost a lot of dollars to the county. And in my opinion, the railroad has always operated on a really slim margin, and we don't have the money for litigation. And so I'm disappointed that something couldn't have been solved before it has gotten to this point. The railroad advisory committee people weren't even involved in any kind of decision. We were not even on the list of people to...
Let me give you an explanation of the Connect Oregon grants. This is the third Connect Oregon grant, I believe, that they've received. It's for 5,000 ties, it's a reimbursement grant. After they put the ties in, then they get reimbursement from the state of Oregon. There's a 30% match. They applied, they were successful, they signed the grant. They, I could just have this meeting this morning, they have not, any reimbursements, they have not implemented yet.
Which just happened.
If they do have those ties, if they're put into line, they will be reimbursed for that. If they go away and somebody else comes in, that grant is transferable to another operator or to the county. So it's not like that it's absolutely not there. The grants before, they put some dollars on the ground, and there's a...
So you have a plan for another entity to take over?
We are working on the best way to keep this operating.
In the next 12 days.
The other thing you're talking about with the grants, each one of those Oregon grants, didn't they require matching funds?
Yeah.
And wasn't that the county's responsibility to provide the matching funds?
No.
I think the contract read that way, and that they have covered those matching funds themselves in the past.
Didn't the county apply...
The contract says that if there's any capital improvements on the line, they have to come to county and get in writing that we approve those capital improvements, then we will purchase those back, and whenever there's a termination, that is depreciation.
And does the county have any input into the grant process? Or you're not representing yourselves along with Lake Railway during the grant process?
The grant wouldn't have been given to Lake Rail, it would have been given to Lake County, because they are the owners.
The grant went to Lake Railway, they applied. They received the grant, there's a 20%...
So you have no financial responsibility for that at all?
There will be...
Include in...
There will be...
Based on the contract?
I would fully anticipate, fully anticipate that Lake Railway is going to try to say that it's our responsibility. Absolutely. If it is our responsibility, and we have those improvements onto the line, then it is our responsibility, and that line's been approved by that amount. So that's investment in our line, so if it comes out that that's what it is, then it is.
But you're gonna put the whole county to litigation in order to find this out?
It's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars to the county as a cost. It's such a taxpayer, it doesn't even matter.
I appreciate so much that you guys really have...
We're pretty passionate about...
You don't have near the compassion I have, I'm sorry to say that out loud, because of my compassion to keep this going, all the way back when we had Don Glance at here, and we went into Hollage Agreement, we kept it operating and continuing on and keeping this going. I have compassion, I guarantee you.
I'm not talking about compassion, I'm talking about passion, that this is something that...
Okay.
I'm not feeling confident with my representatives that it's being handled properly.
Certainly not been handled in a way that anybody understands it.
Or publicly.
Publicly.
It's public information.
It should be, or should have been some time ago, that there were issues.
And you let it build and build and build until you went to the decision.
And made all these decisions without any kind of representation from the community.
You guys said it all right there, that you're not comfortable with the way that we've represented you and the way that you believe that it should have been. I will guarantee you that I'm comfortable with the way that we have lived.
But you're one person, Brad.
I am one person.
We are a community.
And I'm one person, and I'm only one person, I only have one vote. And to go this way was a unanimous vote of the board of commissioners.
Based on what you told them?
Based on what we know.
Who is the, who is and how long has the one commissioner been licensed for the railway?
We are all three liaisons to the railroad.
You're all three leads?
Liaison to the railroad.
And who works with the rail 90% of the time between the three of you?
We, most of it goes through our department head that manages that thing, and is brought back to us.
The man who didn't have our names on the list for the railroad advisory committee that I've advised numerous times that I'm part of, as Dean could probably contest that. I just feel like you've kept us in the dark, I don't appreciate that. I don't appreciate you making a whole lot of legal decisions that may be irreversible, that you don't seem to really know what's going to replace the railroad as it is now. I certainly hope Lake County is not planning to run it, we've already proven pretty much that that's a disaster. And I don't see that you have another plan, or, and if you do, that kinda bothers me too, because it indicates that all along, your plan has been to get rid of Lake Railway so you could put somebody else in, and that really concerns me. So I think it's unfortunate that you haven't been, what's the word? The buzzword now is transparent, and let us know what was going on. And I will carry that to the town in my report too, because I think you haven't been transparent. I think this has been done very quietly and variously, and it's been all in the background. And then, you're hiding behind, "Oh, but it's all a big legal matter. Here's this man who wants to ask some questions and know what's happening to his company and his job." And you say, "Oh, we can't tell you because it's a legal matter." That's not a good thing to do with your company.
And in addition to that, I just want to say, as a private business owner, the decisions that you're making has directly affected me, and I'm sure I'm just one small portion of that. If you take a look at any of the vendors in town that work with the railroad, which there are a lot, it's going to start taking a lot of money away from our community businesses. And we all know what happens when community businesses don't have money. It's not economic development, it does not help our community whatsoever. We're already in a bad state of affairs, it's just gonna make things worse. So we're in a contract with Lake Railway right now for some work, and they called me yesterday and said, "I'm sorry, but we have to put a hold on what we have contracted with you." And I've already put expenses into the contract, so it's not something that doesn't affect a lot of people. If you look at Ed's Dobbs, just for one vendor, millions and millions of dollars flowing through there. And if it's a week or two without that flow, that's a big thing for a business. It's not just that we can take the risk of saying, "Well, we're gonna kinda wait around and see what happens in the next month or two, and try to get a good operator in here." And who's gonna qualify what a good operator is? I see the service record of Lake Railway as being excellent, and I think that what has happened with the financial end of things is more of a personality issue. I can't be sure because of the non-transparency, but it's, I think that I speak for a lot of the community in saying that this is really fishy and wrong.
Also, if you want to talk about the impact financially, we really don't know what will happen with Red Rock. But if we don't have a viable railroad, we can kiss that one goodbye.
And just the rumor.
And if it's not a viable, long-term condition, we will never get them in.
Just the rumor.
That's exactly right.
Yeah.
And maybe that's your goal, I don't know.
To get rid of Red Rock?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's what happened.
I mean, I don't know, we need transparency, so we understand. But just the thought, the rumor, the trend, the, you know...
The thought that it could go down because we don't have a viable operator.
It's going to make a huge impact to Red Rock.
Jeff Mannernack, CFO of Red Rock, we've been in complete communication, we have weekly calls, or non-weekly, monthly calls now. I've talked with him. Jeff is, he applied for a Connect Oregon grant for the bridges through Connect Oregon last time, has a wonderful shot.
So everybody has known except us.
Has a wonderful shot.
And these people.
Has a wonderful shot at getting this next Connect Oregon, to bring the bridges up to 286 so that the fuel can be taken across the bridges.
And I think he worked with Lake Railway on that. I'll be talking to Jeff in the next day or two myself, and I'll...
Very good, I encourage you to.
I will.
Great, great partner.
I don't think we have confidence that you're going to, you have a workable plan that's coming.
I encourage you to hold the O.D.Rail.
I encourage you to share.
I have a pack of stuff right here that would be very enlightening for both you ladies, because we all want that to be a viable railroad.
I think probably Ben Ritter could address that statement.
And if any of the employees wanna talk about any inspections that's happened in the last couple days, or any potential violations, or any defects, or anything there, they're more than welcome to.
Great, okay, we'll let them have the floor then, thank you, Brad.
My name's Quentin Swank, and I'm gonna put this out there, I'm not speaking on behalf of the company, I'm speaking on behalf of my concerns, and possibly the concerns of the other employees. Those violations that you just held up, I have the list on the locomotives alone. Those violations that you just held up, I have the list on locomotives alone and 85% of that work has already been completed. They're not, they're not huge violations, everything, if, if you want to use that against us, they're minimal.
Quentin, it's not against you, you were spoken very highly today by O.Rail.
Well, they're...
And that's a compliment.
They're, they're pure, they're pure professionals and a little bit of my background, I left home in 2007 and I went and served seven years in the United States Army. I came back after being injured and I came back here hoping I could build a life here. And, and what we're being offered here with what you guys are shutting down the railroad or wanting to, it's going to be devastating us. This gentleman, Mr. Bailey, mentioned that even after April 30th, we were to continue our services to the customers. Okay, that's with us displacing and moving to Alturas, that's 50 miles. At 10 miles an hour on a, on a loco, we're going to double our workload. We don't have a shop, we won't have our tools, we'll have to transfer everything into containers. So then our workload doubles or possibly triples. And then we're, we're breaking our backs wondering why we're doing this because at the end of it, when you guys say somebody else is going to come in, what's that be for us? My wife and I want to buy a home and I can't bring myself to possibly do it because I'm not going to bankrupt myself when I lose my job because you guys don't agree with the DeDellias brothers.
Mr. Swank, I, I just got to put this out there. There's been an implementation of a pretty high surcharge and both shippers here, look at transloading and clamor, that means no cars coming into Lakeview, that means no railroad whatsoever into Lakeview.
My, my knowledge of that surcharge is it has been replaced back down to what it originally was.
And how did that come about?
I, I'm not going to go any further because I don't speak for the company, but that has been announced to us as employees and from my understanding, we want to work with the customers as much as customers want to work with us. Without the railroad, it's going to be devastating. And my biggest question is you guys were going to bring somebody else in to run the line. Nobody knows better how bad that line is than myself because I am one of two engineers that run it. That $500,000 Connect Oregon grant isn't going to do anything. It will, it'll help in certain spots, but that still leaves from here to Alturas, 50 miles of track. It's not going to be fixed overnight or with one Connect Oregon grant.
Absolutely. It's going to take months. Almost $5 million to get it up to accepted status, to class one. We know the numbers, we've had it in...
Why would you guys, I understand that you have your, your legalities or fiduciaries for it, but why would you guys want a chance losing a seasoned railroad crew?
We don't want to.
But what's going to happen is when the transfer, the transfer comes in, we're going to have to pull everything. It's going to take forever for us to move our equipment and a new railroad to come in. So we have a lapse in service and we're going to have a lapse in pay because once the DeDellias stop making revenue, we don't get paychecks. So we're going to have to go find other jobs, which in turn...
And there's no need for cars to come into the two shippers we have because the transloading and trucking it all out, we have no railroad service. We can't offer the railroad to Red Rock if we do not have a viable operator.
The calculations of transloading would be catastrophic to the customers financially.
I'll let these customers speak to that.
Well, I appreciate you gentlemen listening to me. That is a concern that we have, the employees have, and, and I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Yes, thank you for your service. My son was also with me for four years, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank all of you there. Thanks. Anybody else?
I have a question. I, I just wondered, with the timing of everything and the O.D.O. inspectors here in the last two days, how did that happen to come about? Is it a surprise inspection, requested inspection?
They, they do, the O.D.O.F.R.A., all of them give that their own guidelines, their own timeframes. I know they were here in September, I visited with them, I never, didn't even know they sent down, they don't notify us when they come in, I don't know if they've notified us or whatever.
Okay, well, it's interesting timing and I hear differently, so that's why I was asking. And Ben, I don't know again, if you have anything to add to any of that.
Well, I, I have an open door relationship with the O.D.O., you know, I work well with them. And we were told that they, they had a planned meeting with you, Mr. Winters, this morning.
Yeah.
Nobody else was notified of that, so again, you know, where's the open door policy? If, if O.D.O. inspectors were here to visit with you about concerns about the operation, the safety of operation, it would have been crucial for someone from the L.R.Y. to represent L.R.Y. Now, you've mentioned the exception reports? They're just exceptions, there was only one violation taken. And you know what that violation was taken on? We failed to have our roadway protection plan in one of the...
You might not have all the reports yet, so you might not have your number of violations. Absolutely correct.
All I saw was one violation. All the rest of them are exceptions. And the exceptions, like Mr. Swank said, are going to be taken care of, they're minimal. There was no serious infractions towards the railroad just going to substantiate a serious fine.
How many fines, what's the total amount of fines for these violations?
I was supposed to have a, a close-up meeting with them at nine o'clock. Apparently your meeting overran out, so I, I haven't been able to meet with them yet.
Yeah, I think it may be a little bit different when you get a chance to visit with them.
Mr. Swank has sent me his reports, I haven't got anything from Mr. Kelly. Jim Adams has provided me his exception report, but like I said, I didn't see anything that was a violation to cause great concerns as far as the safety and the operation of the railroad, unless you know different.
Yeah, the, whenever they reported to me and Dave this morning, they're, it's a little bit different than what you're saying there, but I'll let him talk with you.
Well, if you had the report, share, was it in the open forum?
They're the ones that do the inspections. Everything that O.D.O.R.L. does, I believe, is public record, I believe.
So share.
I, I will believe, I, sure. There's 13 defects, eight violations, $27,000 costs on hours of service, non-compliance, $57,000 on other violations, that's going towards Lake Railway.
Excuse me, sir?
There's 23, uh, are 23 defects on the locomotives.
Those exceptions were not taken during this visit.
I, I just don't know what I was told this morning.
Hours of service was a performance in September, like you, like you said, and the previous manager here did not rectify the issues like was expected. Once I was brought on board, that was why I made a special trip to say, I took time out of my busy schedule to go meet with those O.D.O. inspectors. I mean, we want to make sure we're running a safe operation and we have to work together conjunction with O.D.O., with the county, with the railroad to make sure we do have a safe operation. We have rectified the hours of service. Mr. Kelly will be back here May 27th to do an audit on our training records, our safety records, and our hours of service compliance. In June, Region 7 from Sacramento, the federal government, they've already notified me that Mr. Ritter, we're going to be here in June, let us know a date and a time when you can meet with us and we're going to discuss all of our regulatory compliance issues. I'm not, I'm not aware of all those violations that you mentioned on this go-around. It might have been previous and those have already been addressed, but this week, there was not only one exception or one violation that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm only going with whenever they were letting me know this morning as, as obviously like I said, we're heading to a situation here. And so I am going to work with O.D.O.R.L. just as close as I can, I'm going to stay in contact with them because this is that important to our community. To the board of commissioners, we've had meetings with our shippers, we've had meetings with Paul and Rob DeDellias. We've tried to pull together...
Personally?
We've tried to pull together everything we can. We have one, we've been given options by Rob and Paul DeDellias, they want to purchase the railroad and that's our last and final offer type of thing. So there's a lot to this. I, I know that you want us to, Bill, just go out there and say everything that we have to work on. I really appreciate that, Sharon, I believe that as a fellow politician and that you...
State's person, not, not politician.
As a town counselor, is that there's several things that we have to follow the rules and stay within the guideline, we've got our legal counsel and other things are, that's what we do. We don't take none of this lightly, none of it whatsoever.
I'm, I'm really glad to hear that you don't take it lightly because if you remember about 10 years ago or possibly less, there was a big sector of the community that said, what the heck is Lake County doing owning a railroad? There's no reason for us to have a railroad. There were, you know, there was that side of the community that felt that it was unnecessary. Now that we have this blown up in our faces, those people are going to get right back on the bandwagon and you're going to speak out of, um, un-knowledge, I don't want to say ignorance, but they're not going to have the knowledge if they know about how it does affect our community. And it's, you know, it's just like going back in time. It's like not, not being positive and not being developmentally in the future, it's going back to the past.
I guarantee you, this is not where I want to be because I've been there, done that. We had the haulage agreement, we had the bad operator.
That's good that it's not where you want to be. So stop the litigation and work out the problem.
We try.
Well, that was another thing, you mentioned a couple times, Brad, that you've met face to face with the brothers, Paul and Rob. When was the last time you met face to face with them?
I met face to face with Paul because we went to mediation three weeks ago with the judge.
And you got to, you got to, in mediation, you got to work with, with the client? I mean, usually mediation is separate.
Absolutely, and our legal counsel was there, their legal counsel was there, pulled us all together, we sat down, we talked about the lease, we talked about all of it, we talked about the bridges, and we worked it, and this worked out.
And you presented options to them and they presented options to you and you came to a standstill, is that what I understand?
No, that's not correct.
Okay. We need to know.
So, do we have other...
All right, well, one second. I have one final question. Our employees came here today hoping to hear a solution. Some of our employees, understandably so, would probably seek employment elsewhere. They would like to hear something, what's going to happen on Monday, May 1st? Are we still going to be operating as a railroad? Or are these men that are in presence today going to be unemployed?
I can't speak to what the compliance with the STB is, you probably can more than me, Mr. Ritter, of what the compliance for Lake Railway to continue operations until there's another operator in place or if the negotiations go that they continue to be the operator. I can't absolutely answer that question on that date. I think that you might be able to mention a little bit about when the STB gets involved. If you have 40 years in, you have quite a bit, quite a bit of knowledge.
I have not been involved in any part of the STB's decisions up to this point, so again, like I mentioned, where do these men go May 1st?
Sounds like the employment office.
D. Brown, manager of Collins Pine. I was just informed last night from our president that Collins did sign an agreement with Lake Rail to continue service to the end of May. They did roll back a significant portion of their, but not 100% of their increase that we were given notice of that was going to take effect first of May. When, when I was given that notice...
One second, they're going to continue...
We, we had signed, all we've said is that if the railroad runs, we would continue to ship until the end of May at this point. That's all, that's what I've been understood. Because Rob and Paul has decided to go past me with this, all of a sudden they went straight to the president of the company, which is fine, I don't have to be the in-between person and that, and that's okay, but I'm getting this feedback as of last night. When we were given the notice, and I'm not going to go into all the mud that's been going on for months and, and nobody wants to hear all that, but, you know, we, when I was given the notice of the, the last rate increase in the last year, which is, this is the second one in the last year, I, I flat told them that we could not continue to ship on the rail. It would, I would have to pay to have my ships leave Lakeview. And I don't have the, I can't afford to do that. That, that's a revenue that I'm losing, that Collins is losing. So that's, that was our standpoint as far as, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Ritter, you know, that they have, they have been better as of recently, but we've still missed a lot of cars that we've needed. You alluded to earlier that the pile of ships out there that we still have no revenue for. That, that, that's money out of Collins' pocket that we can't afford. And so for us to stay here and the 75 direct employees that that mill represents, not counting all the loggers and everybody else that goes along with the void drivers and, you know, talked about stops, you know, I, I don't even want to talk about the bill I pay to stops every month and the loggers paying everything. That's a huge amount of revenue in this community alone. So we were at huge risk of not being able to survive. It, it came to the point with this last rate increase that it was more economical to truck our product, to climb the falls and river. That's just with the back.
So you wouldn't have been using a rail.
We would not have been using the rail line.
Similar, and you don't speak for Carverstone, but similar to Carverstone.
Same, same conversation.
We would have a rail line that would be making rust on the rails.
Absolutely.
And our unfortunate employees would not have a job at that time.
They wouldn't have a job, yeah.
So, thank you.
But you do have an agreement with them now?
For, till the end of May.
As of last night, correct?
As of last night, I was told that, yes.
So I, I'm kind of a big picture kind of a girl and hearing this and the rate increases, there's a reason for those rate increases. I think that's the big question. And as the county being the owner of the rail and Lake Railway being the operator of the rail, there should be some kind of communication with one another to understand why the rate increases are necessary and how it can be worked together to accomplish what in the end is probably Lake Railway's need to break even or maybe show a profit. Now, the county is privy to their financial information from what I understand in the lease contract and has been since they've been operating since 2008 or '09. So that information is pretty important for the last, what, 10, 12, how many years would that be? Sorry, I'm...
Seven.
Seven, yeah. For seven years, we've had information that we could deal with and work with people and not let it come to this point.
During those seven years, we amended our lease with them, crashed it down to the amount that they'd pay us so they'd have money to put in the line. We have forgiven some, some costs to the county over the years. We've allowed them all the way back to the haulage agreement, the bill to get in compliance by using just their wages as matched.
So are you saying just even?
We, we have very much so. And even with, with the lease, as you say, they'll either pay us $12,000 a year or 1% of their gross revenue, we have not even held them to that 1% of their gross revenue because we want the money to go back into that line. You're absolutely correct. We are able to get all those financials and everything. We want the money in the rail. Now then, as far as negotiating on the surcharge, they will, they don't negotiate any of the, with us at all. They implement that on the shippers and whenever that's implemented in writing to them that it's going to be this, and the shipper say, we no longer can afford to use a rail, we're going to transload and we're not going to use the rail at all. We lose possibly the opportunity to track Red Rock here or others and the rail being shut down and everybody not having anything at all. And that's where it got to.
I hear what you're saying, but with a company like Lake Railway who now owns, what, five or six lines throughout the nation and they have the expertise and Ben Ritter, I think comes from a very long line of great operators, you know, that doesn't come easy to find an operator that has the knowledge and expertise that Lake Railway has. So the question in the big picture becomes, are, is the other half of the community right? We don't need a Lake, we don't need a railroad because it's just too expensive to operate? I mean, we need to come together to find solutions. You can't expect a company to run a business in the red for seven or eight years. There has to be a solution, you know, perhaps Lake Railway has too many expenses. From what I understand, the brothers, Paul and Rob, don't take a salary on Lake Railway. There's, what is it that is the problem? And Lake County couldn't run it at a profit? What makes us say that the next operator can run it as a profit? That we need to look at all of that and understand it. And certainly, D. Brown doesn't want to pay more than he has to for shipping if he can do it by truck cheaper, but what does that do for Lake County? What does that do for environment? You know, it's not a win-win situation whatsoever and I think that it could be if we were You know, it's not a win-win situation whatsoever, and I think that it could be if we work together.
So do we have any other comments before we close public comment today?
Yeah, I'd like to. Good afternoon. I'm Lane Purple. I've been employed by L.R.Y. for six months. I'm their mechanic. I've also got conductor certified. My question is, is if you guys bring somebody else in, who's going to do the truck work? Who's going to do the millions of dollars of truck work? Because right now, it's the company.
Whoever operates, whatever lease we go into, there will be, right now, the track's in accepted status, so it's at a certain level. The five million dollars I speak to, we just had R.L. Banks, we paid for a private contractor to come in, evaluate the rail cost of cure, including the bridges and everything, so we know what the exposure is, whether it's Lake Railway, or it's another operator. We talk Connect Oregon, those are small segments that we're trying to chip away at. Nobody has the five million dollars right now to throw into that. When we entered into the lease with Lake Railway, they fully understood the condition of it, and they fully understood that they would be working towards getting up to a Class I railroad.
So what company's going to come in here and run ten miles an hour and lose every single month?
I don't know what company's going to, but if Lake Railway's losing money every single month, why do they want railroad?
Because they want to see us play stride. Red Rock.
They have a vision.
What other people are going to do that? Union Pacific ain't going to come in here. ENSF is not going to come in here. It's not going to happen. It's wrong.
There's at least ten other short line operators.
And what's to say it's not going to be the same thing?
We're, I can't tell you that it's not going to be the same thing. We need to set this up for its best potential to succeed for the health and welfare of our community. I think everybody here came with a preconceived idea that we're against the railroad. We're working on it, but that's why we try to save what you guys are invested in, what our community's invested in, at a much bigger picture than just the railroad. We're all the way out to forest health with the sawmill. If we don't have that sawmill here, we're just going to continue to, we won't even have a tool for the Forest Service to be able to clear our forests out there. We have a mine out here that wants to expand, add ten more jobs. We have Red Rock that wants to come into Lake County. If we don't have a viable operating railroad, we're not marketable out there. That's our goal, no matter what. Anybody came here with a preconceived idea, we're working our tails off for our community so that we have that. We want it to be successful. You can take your preconceived ideas and stay with them, or else you can get on board and help us make this a success. We're not able to disclose a lot of things that you guys would like for us to. We're just not able to do that. But we're dedicated, absolutely dedicated, to do this, to make this successful.
Well, and so are we, and we were told to get off the premises on the thirty-first, thirty.
I would like to publicly state that I'm in support of the railroad. I've never been not in support of the railroad.
So, sorry, I didn't hear all this, and I'm sorry.
You made the comment that preconceived notions, that people were in support of the railroad. That's not true.
I'm the preconceived-
That we're not in support of the railroad. We, the Board of Commissioners, are not in support.
Not you guys.
No. I think you're in support of the railroad. I don't think you're in support of that.
Let's let Lane talk.
Last thing, about the fifty or sixty thousand dollar chips on the ground. It is the industry's job to order the cars they need. That's not our fault that those chips are laying on the ground.
Lane, it's not your fault. It's not your fault, you, as an employee of Lake Railway. That's between the business of Collins Company and the owners of Lake Railway. It's things they're not going to tell you as an employee there. I can't imagine that, I'll spin off of what the owners just said, and I'm going to say for the record, I don't care if anybody believes it, doesn't believe it, or understands it or anything else, there has been no one, no one more committed to the health and welfare of this community through the rail line and businesses it impacts than this guy. He has spent tireless amounts of time working on this, trying to come up with solutions. We hope, when all of a sudden, you and all of your fellow employees or fellow workers out there have a job on the rail line, if we don't have a rail line, we have no idea for certain, because we don't run the Collins Company, we don't run Cornerstone, we don't run Red Rock. But my guess is, we'll be in serious hurt. There is no intention on this board's part to do anything but to make it even more viable, and make those industries that exist be able to flourish, as well as the one that's been talked about with Red Rock Vialfield. And in turn, that's going to be a lot of business opportunity and work for the rail line employees. And we don't control you guys. We wish, we wished you didn't have to go through what you're going through. But to get to where we believe we need to get, it's not something we directly control unless we hadn't done what we did. But you just heard Dee say, last night, the president of the company signed an agreement to change the rates that significantly impacted what was going to happen with not only Collins, but Cornerstone, by raising those car rates double what they were. You didn't do that, we didn't do that, but we're trying to make sure that that business is viable. And if that mill shuts down, I believe I know what the future would be, but it's not my business. It's not my business as a part of the ownership of that. But we can't afford to lose the Collins Company. We can't afford to lose Cornerstone. We can't afford to lose the railroad. We can't afford to lose the vision that all of us have been working in this community for over four years with Red Rock. And we're in fairly constant communication with them, and their vision, and what they're working through to get to where we want to get. I guess I don't blame anybody here for not trusting that we've got the best interest, but I can guarantee you, we do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, yes, sir. Unrelated.
Totally unrelated to everything, but a public- Very interesting, totally unrelated subject. My name is Mike Watters. No relation to Commissioner Watters. I'm here-
Nice to put a face to the name, I've heard you.
Actually, I, we did business at one time, years ago. I'm here at the quest of the sheriff, because the community is contemplating the development and deployment of a citizens patrol. It's going to be basically for Lakeview, but also the immediate surrounding, would take in most of the town, possibly out to the Southside Gas Station, which would be county.
You're talking the urban growth boundary of the part of the Lakeview-
Correct. Correct. And I'm here just to let you know, this is just a courtesy thing, to let you know that we're contemplating doing this, we're kind of working our way through the weeds, so to speak, and the sheriff asked me to come and just explain to you kind of what we're going to do, and I'll be very short. Why a citizens patrol? Well, I understand Facebook, seventy percent of what goes on Facebook is hyperbole. And the remaining thirty percent, you can take half of that to be the truth. But when you get people on Facebook and other social media that's going, you know, that their people are to the point of frustration because they're perceived in action of law enforcement, that they start making comments of, "Well, we'll just shoot their tires out." Or, "Why don't we just make citizens arrest and let the police deal with it when they get here?" Or, they have some suspicious vehicle, and people are talking about, "Well, yeah, that's the people that have been doing this and that and all over town. They've been burglarizing and breaking into things." Come to find out, it's just somebody looking for a friend that they want to spend Easter with, that's brought out of town. A citizens patrol, I was involved in Juno Citizen Patrol in General Alaska for eleven years. I was president for six years. It's an organization that has a very symbiotic relationship with law enforcement there. Very unique situation there, and I don't perceive that will ever be established here like there. However, I have a lot of experience, and I believe that a citizens patrol can unify a small nucleus of people to help the police be extra eyes and ears. No guns, no enforcement, they don't leave their vehicles, they travel in pairs, in vehicles. If they get out of their vehicle for any reason other than to get gas or going to home, they'll be terminated. Their relationship with the citizens patrol will end at that point. No contact with the public. They won't confront suspects or suspicious people. They observe and report only, period, at exclamation point. That's it in a nutshell. We're, right now, we're working with Chief Grindel, and the sheriff, and the state troopers to get them on board, and I just had me with the sheriff day before yesterday, and he's skeptical but willing to give us a chance. Chief Grindel's on board with it. So, when we get everything solidified, we will let you know, and we'll bring you, you know, all of our training data, our training materials, all the things that will go into it.
And just so you know, first of all, I'm in a uniform, and I'm not here representing the Department of Corrections. I just had to go on a little time off work. I was also involved with my husband with the Juno Citizen Patrol, and it was a pretty neat organization. We aren't looking for endorsement, we aren't looking for anything from you guys, we just wanted to let you know because it's something that we're looking at having happen in the community, but based if who's involved and who to contact if there's concerns or whatever.
Really appreciate that. And one thing I really like is that you would like, as you get organized and everything, come back and report back to us, and we appreciate that very much. Work sessions is a great timing, actually get on the agenda. On our Tuesday work session days are a good day to do that, coordinated with Denise. And I'm sure you're going exactly where I would sit, working with our law enforcement side, what you're doing.
And I'm on the agenda for the town council meeting on the twenty-fifth. I'm going to do the same thing with them. And the other thing is, we will require little to no resources from the town, the county and the state, with the exception of periodic classroom training hours, like two hours a month or something like that, from sworn officers to get it, to keep everybody on the same page. What does law enforcement expect of us, and what can we provide to them?
And if there's been any problems, how to address those problems.
So was this quite successful in Alaska?
Absolutely. It's been going on for almost thirty years now, and yes, the material I brought is, yeah, the material that has been developed is really very unique. It's not a citizens on patrol, it's a citizens patrol. Like, we don't, we use our own vehicles, we're not a-
They're not marked vehicles.
No marked vehicles.
There's nothing, the person doing the patrol doesn't get anything out of it, except that they're giving back to the community voluntarily.
Well, that's what I very much appreciate. Wow, thank you.
And just like with Chief Grindel and the sheriff, I explained to them, I'm not some wannabe quack. I served for fifteen years in the General Police Department as a training consultant. I developed and trained the CERT team, their Special Emergency Response Team. I trained with their EOD department. I developed a lot of their classified curriculum for different training techniques. And then I served with the Juno Citizen Patrol for eleven years. My wife is, she is a dispatcher for the General Police Department, and she served with an organization called General Youth Services for nine years there that dealt with youth at risk. And anyway, so we're, we're here.
We've been talking about this for years. We've been in Lakeview now for twelve years, and we've been talking about this for years to allow this community to do something like this. And we're hoping for maybe a small core group of like six or eight people, not something enormous, and to document suspicion and report active criminal activity, not to overwhelm the dispatchers and local law enforcement, like a lot of periphery stuff, but to give them, right, to give them something to go to when they get a report that this happened in this area, if they could look at our log and say, "Oh, they did see something in that area," and then have somebody that will testify to what they saw.
And we have suspicious activity report that we fill out, give to the law enforcement, if we do see suspicious activity.
Well, thank you so much.
No problem.
It's unbelievable, you having the care and desire to help make this a better community.
If you can extra time.
Just a little bit of description, and we have a lot more, here's one for Mr. Kessler. We have a lot more information and references and whatnot, but that's probably for later day.
Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Our pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Okay. So, our next timed items, ten-ten, missed that by now. So, we will open up our public hearing on our key ordinance, ordinance fifty-two, key ordinance update. This is the second of two hearings. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we'll take a recess.
We will take a recess at eight minutes after eleven, and we'll take a recess for the notes.